I'd like to call the work session of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel on Wednesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-two to order. First agenda item is a charter resolution number one seventy-five. This charter resolution was introduced at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there any additional discussion on this legislation? Second public hearing with possible action scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Agenda item one B, charter resolution number one seventy-six. This charter resolution was introduced at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there any additional discussion on this legislation? All right, a second public hearing with possible action is scheduled for the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at six P M. Agenda item one C, ordinance number nineteen ninety-eight, an ordinance adopting the general operating budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Tonight, we start the budget review. All right. Introduction of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance is scheduled for... Let me restart. Excuse me. Sorry. We're gonna head towards... Budget overview, Director Saylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. The F Y two thousand twenty-three budget has been presented to you as required by the city charter. The general operating budget is balanced at thirty-eight million, seven hundred eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars, with reauthorized capital improvement program funds of fourteen million, one eighty-three, two eighty-six, and new funding requests of eleven million, nine forty-two, five sixty-three. Overall, this budget is five point three percent greater than the originally adopted F Y two thousand twenty-two budget. It was prepared in order to maintain city services, to supply the employees with the materials and the equipment that they need to provide those services, as well as the benefits to the employees. The largest revenue is the real estate taxes. That's sixty-four percent of the total revenue. That's an overall increase of five percent. The assessable base has increased by five point one nine percent across the board to three billion, six hundred thirty million, six hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The budget includes our non-departmental expenditures of debt service pension contribution, the transfer to the capital improvement program from the operating budget. Local taxes, again, what I just mentioned were just the real estate taxes portion, but local taxes, which also includes the business personal property and any interests and fees. That is, again, the largest revenue source that we have at sixty-seven point six percent. The next category, the next largest category is state shared taxes. This includes the local income tax share that we receive from the state of Maryland for income tax filings of city residents. It also includes the highway user revenue. That is an apportionment based on the miles of streets that the city maintains, as well as the gasoline tax and the title transfer fees for vehicles. It also includes admissions and amusement tax. The largest of that would be the movie theater portion. The next largest section that we have in revenues is fines and forfeitures at six point five eight percent. This includes the red light camera tickets, parking tickets, and impound fees. We can break down our expenditures by department category. So that would be your general government, public safety, public works, parks and recreation, and non-departmental. The largest of these is the public safety section. That includes the police department, the fire marshal and permit services, and the Office of Emergency Management. If you break down the expenditures by line item categories, this would be compensation, operating expenses, employee benefits, capital outlay, miscellaneous financial uses and debt service. The largest of those is compensation. That being said, what is budgeted in this, excuse me, in this operating budget includes the pay plan, like I said, for the employees, which includes the amounts obligated under the current collective bargaining agreement for the sworn officers and the increase in the minimum wage to thirteen twenty-five an hour as of January first, two thousand twenty-three. Miscellaneous financial uses is a section of the expenditure budget where we provide, if funded, a transfer to the capital improvement program, which allows us to pay for certain parts of the C I P in cash. So this year in F Y twenty-two, we completed the debt service for our two thousand seven and two thousand twelve local government infrastructure financing programs. So the debt service that would have been budgeted, which is now complete, is proposed in the miscellaneous financial uses as that transfer to the C I P. At this point, that's the completion of my overview, Mr. President, and the comparisons of the revenue categories.
Thank you, Zoe. And you went over there, and you just did the revenue. All right. Thank you, Derek Saylor. Moving on to the Chief of Staff, Sarah Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Office of the Mayor budget starts on page thirty-two. The proposed F Y two thousand twenty-three general operating budget includes funding for various activities and expenses of the mayor's office and support services for the city's boards, commissions, and committees. There are no anticipated equipment purchases budgeted for the mayor's office this year. The mayor's office provides support to the mayor in carrying out his responsibilities to the citizens and businesses of Laurel in securing the enforcement of all ordinances and resolutions passed by the city council, as well as the administration of the city government. Our main goals and initiatives for F Y two thousand twenty-three include continuing to represent the mayor during the annual Maryland General Assembly Session in Annapolis and at meetings at the Prince George's County Council as necessary. Additionally, the mayor's office staff will represent him at the Laurel Historical Society Board meetings and assist the mayor in coordinating with state county officials on the funding of and development of the services for the new Mokey Service Center and the Laurel Dam Ruins Project. The next budget that I have for the mayor's office is the community permissions budget, which starts on page fifty-six. The proposed F Y two thousand twenty-three budget includes funding for various needs and the permission of citywide events and informational literature. This budget also includes funding for various civic organizations and special events. There are no anticipated equipment purchases in this budget. Community promotions provides funding to promote and support city events, community events, civic improvements, and the general welfare of the city. Our main goals and initiatives for F Y two thousand twenty-three include continuing the city's support of the many programs and special events in the Laurel community. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to council clerk elections. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, council members, we'll start with the clerk to the council budget on page thirty. This budget includes the salaries for the mayor. I'm sorry, it includes the salaries for the city council. It includes the cost for codification of our ordinances through MuniCode, which we do with supplements, preferably quarterly, and it also pays for hosting of our city code and charter on the website. It includes, I'm sorry, I started on the clerk's budget. Let's go to the council budget, which is page twenty-eight. All right, let me start over. This budget includes the council salaries. It includes membership dues for M M L and P G C M A. We split those dues with the mayor's office. It includes advertising and printing for the city council members, as well as travel for the council, registrations, hotel per diem, and any airfare. It includes the expense allowance for the council members, the council president expense, and a presentation budget. There are no anticipated equipment purchases in this budget, and the total budget for the council is a hundred and five, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, a hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That's the presentation of the city council budget. The next budget I have, Mr. President, and council members, is on page thirty, and this is the clerk to the council. This budget includes the salaries for the clerk and administrative assistant. It includes the funding for MuniCode, who hosts our city code and charter online. We pay an annual subscription so that they host our city code, and we pay a quarterly supplemental codification fee. In this budget, we have membership for the clerk and the administrative assistant in the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association. Also included in this budget is conferences and conventions for training for the clerk and the administrative assistant. We provide assistance to the five city council members, as well as to the Board of Election Supervisors and service staff liaisons to several committees. There are no proposed equipment purchases in this budget. The clerk's budget is a total of two hundred and eight thousand, sixty-four dollars. The next budget, Mr. President, council members, is the election budget. You'll find that on page thirty-eight. There is no election scheduled for this budget cycle, so you will see that the budget is reduced. We have budgeted twenty thousand dollars, fifteen for the attorney, four thousand dollars for advertising and publishing, and a thousand dollars for postage. The board has been having some discussions about some possible changes to the makeup of the board and possibly some changes to some of the election laws, and the thinking was that we would be doing some community promotion to let the community know what those changes are and reach out. As you know, we're going to be doing an additional early voting center in the next budget, so the board is hoping to get some of that information out ahead during this budget cycle. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to city administrator. I have Deputy City Administrator Derek Joanne Barr.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. The Office of the City Administrator budget starts on page thirty-five. So critical services in this budget include legal services, professional memberships, trainings, conferences, and summits that allow the city administrator to engage with other municipalities, professional organizations, and government entities. Additional expenditures in this budget are for the day-to-day operations of the city administrator's office and the environmental programs. In continuing programs as part of the Phase Two Sustainability Plan, initiatives include, but are not limited to, printed materials for the distribution to residents on environmental and sustainable programs within the city, informational campaigns that assist residents in navigating the green registry, how to use organic composting program, how to shop sustainability, and the tips or toss homeowner mosquito control program, or just to name a few of those initiatives. Funding will also be used to assist in cleanup events, promote activities and events with the Environmental Affairs Committee, promote and host B-City activities and initiatives, provide green promotional giveaways at city-sponsored events such as the Open House Health Fair, City Hall in the Park, Earth Day, and Patuxent River Cleanup Day. Funding is also for design and printing of informational resident calendars that highlight important city events and dates, and the sustainability program that is placed in the door hangers that are made from compostable bags. Other door hanger initiatives include distributing meeting notices or other events and announcements as necessary, and much of this funding was previously provided in the Department of Public Works budget. The budget also manages the eight new Big Belly Trash and Recycling Unit contracts that provide for the maintenance and repair of the new receptacles. The four older units that the city owns are no longer under contract. With these new units, we now have the ability to display promotional and marketing material on the units themselves, so the proposed funding is for the cost of design and printing for the signage that will highlight both city and community programs, events, and activities. This budget contains no equipment acquisition. New programs and initiative in this budget include funding for graphic arts projects to promote city marketing through new initiatives such as the interchangeable posters in the Big Belly receptacles, graphic art wraps around utility boxes and other public structures around the city, and other initiatives requested by the Arts Council. Also included, new to this budget, are the B-City USA membership, as well as the Laurel Citizens University. Laurel Citizens University is a community outreach initiative that will help educate our residents on the fundamentals of municipal government and how our city operates. The program will act as a forum to recruit new volunteers for various committees, commissions, and help train future government leaders. The proposed program will allow for eight sessions over a four-month period to conclude with a graduation. Objectives will allow participants to gain a better understanding of how local government functions, to include all city departments, participate and interact with knowledgeable staff to learn and understand how city finances, operations, projects, and services are developed, distributed, and executed, serve as a role model to community and neighborhood residents, build a livable, sustainable community, learn about volunteer opportunities within city government, and obtain feedback from citizens regarding governmental programs and services. Funding in the C I P for environmental programs includes the replacement of gas-powered landscaping equipment with battery-operated equipment to comply with Maryland House Bill nine thirty-four, the purchase of additional toters as part of the curbside organic recycling program, and projects related to the sustainability plan to include cog consulting fees and development of an outreach plan and implementing eco-friendly practices. So that concludes the overview of the Office of the City Administrator.
Thank you, Deputy Administrator Barr. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna go through each department that I'll call into council at the end for their questions and comments. Department of Budget and Personnel Services, I have, again, Director Saylor.
Good evening again, Mr. President, council members, Mayor Mo. The Department of Budget and Personnel Services is responsible for all the financial activities of the city, including the budget preparation and administration, the annual audit preparation, pension and payroll administration, accounts receivable, and all revenue records and collection, accounts payable, H R policy administration and record management, as well as the application process for vacancies, onboarding, interview process, and the property insurance administration and risk management. There are ten employees in our department. Each one has a specialized area, but we have to maintain appropriate separation of duties so that we have checks and balances in place. New programs and initiatives, from December through the middle of March, we were involved in the preparation, training, and testing of our new software. We went live in the middle of March with all of our functions, with the exception of accounts receivable, which is still pending. We're working through training and testing, but that will be soon. So that has allowed us to continue to improve our electronic capabilities in the way of paying our bills, paying the employees. It has offered some additional improvements in streamlining our processes. We don't have any planned equipment acquisition in this budget, and we manage the C I P along with the departments that are involved, but we do not have a specific program or plan. And that's my presentation for the Department of Budget and Personnel Services, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Moving on to Department of Communications, we have Director Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor Mo, Council President Brensa Smith, and distinguished members of the Laurel City Council. The Department of Communications budget starts on page forty-three. The proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three includes funding for critical services, which account for at least half of the Department of Communications budget. Top of the list is the operation of the city's passport acceptance facility, which is absolutely critical for the city. It generates anywhere from eighty thousand dollars in revenue to a five-year high of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a few years back. So keeping the postage meter fed and supplies on the shelves is critical for our operation. Other critical services involve the operation of Laurel TV. We will now be doing an annual lease on live gear, which we rolled out successfully for the first time for the One and Done Press Conference, a huge benefit to our communications effort. I also want to mention our closed captioning services. Our heart of hearing and our deaf residents are so appreciative of this service, which is activated by your remote control on your individual residence devices. It's so important that everyone be able to get our live-saving emergency alerts and other City of Laurel information. Parts of our budget are also dedicated to Laurel TV video and production services, which made the Take the Shot Laurel campaign a huge success. Also must-haves, the government to the People Magazine gets mailed to every residence in the city annually. It's a very valuable tool for us. So continuing programs within the Department of Communications. We also coordinate the volunteer program. This is a huge benefit to our high school students looking for community service hours and our local businesses who need volunteers to supplement their work force. Our parks and our riverbanks get cleaned up, and other services are rendered through these continuing volunteer programs. Major equipment acquisitions, we will be leasing our live unit yearly instead of purchasing it because we determined that was the most financially fiscal thing for us to do. We will reevaluate that after the first year and plan accordingly going forward. New programs and initiatives, our podcast room build-out is set to begin soon. The supply chain issues are behind us, and we're looking forward to getting started with that project because it will become an additional revenue generator for the city and a great Department of Communications tool. The Department of Communications is not embarking on any C I P projects this fiscal year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Director Barnes. Moving on to Department of Economic and Community Development, we have Director Love.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, and council members. Department of Economic and Community Development budget starts on page forty-seven. The proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three general operating budget for E C D includes funding for the Unified Land Development Code updates, services such as plan and application view, which are critical with the number of projects and increased applications taking place in the city. The department will be continuing the Main Street Facade Grant Program, which provides the funding needed to maintain and upgrade the commercial and residential buildings along the Main Street area. The Main Street Relocation Grant also still has funds available for those businesses such as just moving into the Main Street area. We will continue with the comprehensive code updates for the Unified Land Development Code, mainly to streamline the code and make it more user-friendly. Funding will also be used for materials as mailings for various boards and commissions that fall under E C D's purview. In the upcoming fiscal year, we want to help businesses move past the economic difficulty of the past few years. Department will be looking to expand on various economic development events, primarily in person, hoping to utilize the upgraded Farmer's Market lot in order to do that. We will be refocusing on the establishment of Laurel Main Street Organization, which seeks to promote the revitalization and preservation of Laurel's Main Street through a collaborative effort between city Laurel government, the city residents, and property owners, and the stakeholders. My presentation, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Love. All right, moving on to the Department of Information Technology, we have Director Kevin Frost.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our document's on page fifty. The Department of Information Technology has nine full-time employees. The fiscal year twenty-three budget maintains the core functions of the Department of Information Technology. These includes our data network, such as our data cabling and our fiber infrastructure, server, desktop, and laptop management, mobile device management, and our enterprise phone system. The budget fully supports our public safety and emergency management, government radio systems, and our general government radio systems, and supports police and emergency management technology. It also supports enterprise software, such as the finance system and the H R system Director Saylor just discussed, our new system permitting fleet maintenance, parks and recreation, and G I S mapping. This budget also maintains a strong cybersecurity posture and continues funding for cybersecurity awareness program for our employees. It also includes a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five cybersecurity monitoring, which is a significant part of our current operation. The I T budget in fiscal year twenty-three is about six percent of the city's budget. The I T budget is primarily a maintenance and support budget. It maintains all the systems I just mentioned above. The capital outlay you will see is about forty thousand dollars this year. That includes some laptops, computer monitors, P O S printers and scanners that are end-of-life and need replacement. That concludes my presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Frost. Moving on to the non-departmental line items, we're looking at property liability insurance. We're going to Risk Management Officer Pat Hag. Sorry if I pronounced your name wrong.
That's fine. Good evening, Council President Smith, Councilmembers, Mayor Mo. Tonight I'm going to highlight some of the line items on the property and liability insurance. This year we will be bringing on the pollution liability insurance, which is a three-year program. Last year ended that three years, so this year is a it's a prepaid policy, so it's one time in three years. The crime insurance policy is also a three-year policy, but we pay a fixed premium every three years. The cyber premium is a very difficult policy to break right now in the current market. Legit right now does not charge us anything for our premium, but we've put twenty-five thousand dollars to absorb the costs in case they do not cover exactly what we need, which is based on our experience and our rating by the industry. Property values have significantly increased in this region. Construction cost has risen greatly, which is going to increase property values and our property liability budget. Liability have increased due to the reduction in COVID cases over the past couple of years, but now the renewals are experiencing that experiences have caught up with the levels in F Y twenty-one, so the liability coverage is increasing for that reason. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to employee insurance, training, and tuition, Deputy Director Lisa Woods.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. President. Um, Councilmembers and Mayor Mo. Um, sorry, let me get my video going. There I am, I'm sorry. The employees' insurance budget starts on page one thirty-six. The provide the the proposed twenty twenty-three general budget includes funding for to provide health, dental, and vision insurance to the employee and their families. The employee portion is twenty percent of the cost and the city portion is eighty percent. Also included in this budget is the long-term disability and additional A D and D for police officers and the workers' compensation. Um, the next part is for our training and tuition budget, which starts on page one forty. The proposed budget for F Y twenty-three is tuition is is a program under which employees may seek financial assistance for tuition for classes to further their job-related knowledge and skills and the value to the city. There are ten employees that have that have been budgeted for between six and nine credits each. Training is also offered to the departments for employees for further succession planning and continued education for certifications and employee development. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Woods. Moving on to debt service pension contribution, and we're back to Director Saylor.
Hello again. So the debt service budgets are on pages one thirty and one thirty-one. We currently have two loans with P and C Bank. Um, last year we refinanced existing loans and consolidated them into one loan. And then because of the interest rate of one point three-three percent, we were also able to take an additional loan without extending our debt service budget and provide funding for the F Y twenty-two C I P. We also still have remaining debt service for the two thousand sixteen Local Government Infrastructure Finance Program. There is still two point two million dollars principal balance on that debt instrument. So what we have budgeted is based on the amortization schedules, and as I mentioned in my overview, the two thousand seven and two thousand twelve programs have completely have completed paying that debt service. So those funds have been proposed to be moved to the capital improvement program during this budget cycle. For the pension contribution, that's on page one hundred and thirty-two. We have budgeted the full actuary recommended contribution of two million four hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. That's based on the F Y twenty-twenty-one valuation conducted by the actuaries. Of that contribution, seven hundred seventeen thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars is attributable to the employee plan and one million seven hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars is attributable to the police plan. And this helps to fund current and future benefit payments for the retirees. And that concludes that section for me, Mr. President.
You can move on to your your capital improvement program.
Yes, sir. So on pages one forty-three through one forty-five, you'll see the schedule. First, the first schedule is the reauthorization of funding. So for projects that were proposed and approved in years F Y twenty-twenty-two and and earlier, we are proposing to reauthorize these funds so that those these projects can continue. And that totals fourteen million one hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars. And there's a mixture of projects between special projects, which includes the information technology, hazard mitigation, electric charging station. There's also facility projects. We have the energy efficiency improvements, the Multi-Resource Center. We have park projects that are ongoing and the infrastructure projects, which include streets, street lights, safety enhancements. And of course, our fleet acquisition to replace city vehicles. We have new funding requests for F Y twenty-twenty-three. And I'll need to get you a revised page for this from what was submitted, and that is only to adjust the environmental programs. There was funding or there is funding proposed seventy thousand dollars for the pedestrian and bicycle plan. That was in the environmental program, but we have moved that to the public works section of the new funding. Additionally, we have the commitment from the state of Maryland for two point five million dollars in state funds toward the engineering and renovations of building two oh four, the two oh four Fort Mead Road facility. So that will be added in for a total, a new total of eleven million nine hundred forty-two thousand five sixty-three. The funding breaks down into public safety surcharge of a million three hundred seventy-one thousand, speed camera funds of two hundred sixty-four thousand twenty-eight dollars, peg funding for fiber and the I T project of a hundred and fifty thousand grants, as I mentioned, two point five million for the building two oh four. Two point five or I'm sorry, one point five million for hazard mitigation to convert our generators to natural gas from diesel and forty thousand dollars for a radio grant. General, the general operating budget transfer is a million eighty-one thousand five hundred thirty-five. And we have proposed ARPA funds of five million thirty-six thousand to include the funding of the environmental programs, the street infrastructure, public works, projects, as well as some of the I T programs and the I T programs, sorry. So that would fall under the the revenue recovery category of the ARPA funds, which allows us that flexibility for capital programs, replacing funds that we would not have have had or did not have because of the pandemic. That's the allowance, and we selected the ten million dollar option for the revenue recovery. And that is the summary of the C I P, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Moving on to Department of Parks and Recreation, we have Director Bill Bailey.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, Councilmembers. The Parks and Recreation Department of Facilities and Grounds budget can be found on document pages thirty through fifty-eight, and the recreation budget can be found on document pages eighty-nine through one oh six. The proposed F Y twenty-twenty-three general operating budget includes funding for critical services, so two eight oh to two nine four budgets, fund the staffing, could does could does cook can even pronounce that, support, maintenance, and upkeep of the city's buildings and parkland. Line items include utility supplies and repairs necessary to allow the operations within the buildings to continue. Five oh one through five fifty budgets funds the staffing programs and services that occur within the recreation facilities. Most of these line items support programs that are revenue-producing while other programs are necessary to promote the health and wellness of the community. Services such as senior van transportation, Laurel Helping Hands, counseling, preschool, and day camp can be deemed critical for the individuals and families. Continuing programs, the value of Parks and Recreation programs are memorable. Again, many of the programs offered by the Department of Parks and Recreation are revenue-producing programs that support the city's operating, general operating fund. The department receives grant funding from several agencies that is contingent on providing services. Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission provides funding for youth services, special events, after-school and youth teen programs, and senior programs supported by the park tax paid by residents. Additionally, Laurel Helping Hands receives funding from the Department of Family Services to support the Youth Services Bureau programs and counseling services to city, county, youth, teens, and adults. The program is obligated to provide these services to receive reimbursement. With the events of the past years, never was the light shown so strongly on the value of Parks and Recreation. With the shutdowns, outdoor parks became a refuge for safety, safe safely exercises both mind and body. The value of the community now and in the future cannot be minimized as we return to normalcy. The department will continue to open back up, offering programming that the residents are accustomed to. There are no equipment purchases in the F Y twenty-three budget. New programs and initiatives. The department has submitted requests for both programming and building maintenance for two new building acquisitions, two oh four Fort Mead Road and the Goody House. While two oh four is still in development, the Goody House was just occupied by the Department of Parks and Recreation administrative staff. The department must provide funding for utilities and repairs and other maintenance needs necessary while working, while work is ongoing in preparation for the opening for the public use. The department has also submitted revenue projections for the potential program operation. Both sides sites will offer rental opportunities to the public. The gymnasium and multi-use athletic rooms will be available for youth and adult sports organizations, and the Goody House will be available for high-end social functions. Synopsis of the C I P projects. The renovation of two oh four Fort Mead Road facility into the Laurel Resource Center that will allow the city to address critical needs of the homeless population as well as struggling individuals and families. Continuing projects, replacement enhancement of the park path lights around Goody Park, resurfacing an outdoor tennis court, basketball courts, site selection and installation of outdoor living classroom, parking lot repaving and athletic field lighting upgrades at Stephen P. Turney Recreation Complex, parking lot repaving at the Barkman Kaiser Safety Complex in the rear of the Laurel Municipal Center, and a carport solar roof project at the Farrell Foundry Public Works Complex. Major equipment acquisitions, facility enhancements, redesigned power configuration within the Laurel Municipal Center server room to support growing information and technology needs, and reconfigure insecurity upgrades to the Laurel Municipal Center. And lastly, the citywide HVAC replacement for city facility. That concludes the overview for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Director Bailey. Um, moving on to public safety section, I'm going to start with the Laurel Police Department and Chief Hamon, you have the floor.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Mo, Council President Smith, and the honorable members of our city council. The budget for the Police Department starts on page eighty-seven in your documents. So our primary costs remain salaries and benefits, professional services of the women and men of the Laurel Police Department. A professional sworn staff endeavor to serve our community, providing a full-scale of traditional police services expected of a modern-day police department while engaging the entire community across many fronts. The department is a primary and sole law enforcement agency serving the city of Laurel, provides all patrol, investigative, community outreach, and other law enforcement functions to our communities. When we go to continuing programs, our Axon Services contracts are seeing an increase in expenses going forward, which is due in large part to the recent legislative changes from the napless regarding body-worn cameras. Our agency was the first in the state to implement a department-wide body-worn camera program, but our expenses are now increasing due to a mandated increase in the buffer time during contacts from thirty seconds to one minute of recording. This is a considerable increase, causing our storage costs to also go up. So we must now, as we must now go to an unlimited storage program. Our Lexible Policy Review Implementation and Training Platform is ongoing. With the Tier One policies recently going live, this assists the department in enhancing professionalism and meeting community and industry expectations. Also enhancing our abilities to conduct fair, thorough, and timely investigations in the modern world remains a focus for our detectives and patrol officers alike. We utilize numerous professional subscriptions and technical resources to achieve these goals, to include Accurant, I C P Net, Calio, and Z-Tex. We also utilize sources such as Blue Team scheduling software and K nine track to better manage the entire agency. We believe that the continued training and education of our workforce is critical to providing highly skilled and professional police services to the community. We train far beyond the requirements of the state and continue to seek to have a well-trained, well-educated, and highly skilled police department here in Laurel. Of course, we must provide critical full-service law enforcement operations, ensure we do so within the expectations of our community. We believe that all of our programs are critically important to meeting community and city public safety needs and expectations, as well as to fully engage our communities throughout the city. Our patrol and investigation responsibilities include a patrol division that is deployed to meet and surpass the needs of the community and to most effectively manage calls for service, traffic safety issues, engagement efforts, and other critical public safety needs. Unusual for most municipal agencies, our investigative division conducts a wide range of investigations, murder, manslaughter, sex offenses, violent assaults, burglaries. Murder, manslaughter, sex offenses, violent assaults, burglaries, thefts. Robberies, frauds and even serious traffic related matters. We also manage internally a host of administrative processes required to sustain a modern police department. Including internal administrative investigations, supporter master and property functions. General order management, maintaining a responsive and effective communications division. A records management system and training and education responsibilities. Finally, our community engagement division uh works closely with the other sections of the Police Department while assisting to lead our efforts. They're remaining connected and responsive to the community we serve. Or um we uh department remains extremely engaged with the people of Laurel, provides a large variety of outreach programs. Uh that are reflected within our budget to include a newly engaged citizens academy. Coffee with a cop events, youth camps, advisory boards, community cleanup events, community meetings. And support for numerous numerous community events, including parades, races. Picnics and larger scale events to include emancipation day and the main street and Fourth of July celebrations. Throughout the pandemic, uh we've seen logistical issues. Um our team has been ever-present though at uh food distribution drives. Providing holiday resources to community members and other worthy endeavors. All told, our programs remain efficient, directly meeting the missions and goals of our department. For major equipment acquisitions within this budget, I turn your attention to the mobile license plate reader. Uh which is uh anticipated to enhance various investigative and public safety needs for the department. For pro laser lidar units, um which are speed uh enforcement boot units. To assist with enhancing our traffic safety initiatives for the department. As well as two GPS tracking devices to assist with investigative needs. And help mitigate some personnel costs and assist with overall community safety enhancement. Um already, uh as for new programs and initiatives, already discussed the importance of Lexible programs. For maintaining a well-trained and responsible police agency. Also, our ever-changing community engagement programs were already highlighted above as well. I would be remiss if I didn't note the importance going forward of our residential speed camera. Uh legislation that was approved, that will help to maintain traffic and pedestrian safety. And we anticipate as we consider the traffic and parking analysis. Uh being analyzed, we will be seeking to expand programs and look forward to future discussions. For our uh synopsis of CIP projects. I would turn your attention to as we continue to execute our fleet replacement program. Uh with our enterprise vendor. Uh within this budget, we're seeking the approval for uh thirteen marked vehicles and three administrative vehicles for the upcoming fiscal year. Which fits the um schedule that we had initiated uh upon executing this contract, so we're staying on schedule. Uh you'll see there was a slight markup uh due to the costs associated uh with um current issues facing uh the automotive industry. And with that, I thank you for your kind attention to this and look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. Moving on to the Office of Fire, Marshal and Permit Services, Director Danny Sobey.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Mo, President Smith and council members. The Department of the Fire, Marshal and Permit Services budget starts on page ninety one. The proposed FY twenty twenty three general operating budget includes funding for building and fire and life safety plans review that are critical. Towards the department's mission of protecting the life, health, safety and welfare of the citizens. Businesses, visitors and properties in the city of Laurel. The department meets this goal through the administration and enforcement of adopted fire. Building, electrical, mechanical, energy, property maintenance, its codes and ordinances. The department provides and manages a wide range of permits and licenses. Needed to ensure that proper procedures, guidance and requirements are met. The administration of the city's code and ordinances. The department provides a high degree of internal and external customer service through the use and enforcement of multiple. National standards in fire, life safety, building, electrical and property codes. In addition to the construction inspections and property maintenance programs. The department will continue to provide and improve the city's rental license program. And the commercial fire and life safety inspection programs in FY twenty twenty three. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Sobey. Um moving to Office of Emergency Management. And that's Emergency Manager Chrissy Cornwell, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh Council President, Council Members and Mayor Mo. The Office of Emergency Management Budget starts on page ninety four. The proposed FY twenty twenty three budget supports funding for the emergency management activities. The office is responsible for enhancing emergency response and recovery coordination. Providing emergency planning, conducting emergency training and exercises. Facilitating public education and community outreach programs and fostering and maintaining partnerships. The office's critical services are flood mitigation programs such as our community rating system. Disaster preparedness programs, this includes training and exercising city employees and partners. And developing and updating emergency management plans. Also, our response and recovery efforts such as um the Emergency Operations Center. Emergency response vehicles such as the canteen uh to ensure there are a ready readiness status. In addition, manning any managing any post-disaster programs or grants. The office's continued programs are the Emergency Services Commission Grant Program. Which provides funding to public safety organizations. Uh our public outreach program which enhances the ability to educate residents and businesses. On emergency preparedness, response and recovery efforts. And ways to mitigate potential loss of life and property. Also, we have an AED program. Our office manages the AEDs and also provides training on AED, CPR and stop the bleed. There's no major equipment, new program or initiative request. Uh as far as the uh CIP projects, critical and continued projects are our resiliency program. Which uh will continue to expand on this program this year and the capabilities by matching stakeholders. With response and recovery efforts through points of distribution, continuity of operations and volunteers. Also additional one is our grant writing and research, which allows our office to coordinate with uh consultants to provide grant writing and research for future uh projects such as mitigation. Uh new projects under CIP is our EOC enhancements, which is our Emergency Operations Center. Which is to provide uh two workstations for our call takers. Um which would be located in the EOC. Uh this would give them dedicated space to answer calls and provide updates to residents when we do activate our emergency operation center. In addition, uh generator replacement, uh this can be consist of uh converting city city facility generators from diesel power to natural gas. Um and upgrading natural gas piping meters and distribution equipment for each city facility. This concludes the Office of Emergency Management's budget summary. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Chrissy Cornwell. And lastly, moving to Department of Public Works, Director Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Smith, Mayor Mo and Council Members. The Department of Public Works budget starts on page sixty three. Uh I will highlight each category is quite extensive and then I'll await uh questions if if so afterwards. Uh the Department of Public Works is responsible for a wide range of services to the citizens of Laurel. Including residential, commercial refuse, compost and recycling, street and sidewalk maintenance and repair. DPW also provides dam and storm drain maintenance, tree management, traffic engineering. Effective management of the capital improvement programs, upgrading roads, sidewalks, curb and gutters. Maintenance of the automotive fleet, snow and ice removal and quick and effective emergency response and implement weather. Service delivery includes administration, traffic engineering, engineering design review, project management, tree management. Contract administration, project inspection, snow removal, street maintenance, automotive maintenance. Refugees collection and disposal, street lighting. Recycling collection, disposal, infrastructure inspection and reporting and compost collection. FY twenty three goals and initiatives. Some of the newer programs are enhancing the city provided recycling, compost and services. As you see that we're the boots on the ground for the one and done uh program. Improvements to existing traffic signalization, supervision of street construction projects. Planning and engineering of future street construction projects, alley improvements, as you know, also. We have a huge program going with that that we've started, expanding street maintenance and activities. New for twenty twenty three will be a salt management program. Revamping of the safety and compliance office and bringing online our ARPA funded projects as you've heard a little about. Uh we'll also be reviewing our transportation modalities, including increasing bikeways and connecting pedestrian walkways as we are partnership in the National Capitol Trail. Public Works will continue to study the safety and traffic patterns of the city and roadways throughout twenty twenty three. And implement parking and traffic calming strategies as warranted. Moving on to how our budget is positioned. The Department of Public Works expenditures. Traffic engineering takes up approximately four percent. Tree management takes up approximately two percent. Public Works Administration is eleven percent, automotive maintenance is twenty four percent, which of course includes fuel. Waste and collection disposal is twenty two percent. Recycling is seven percent, of course, we expect that to increase in twenty twenty three. Street maintenance is eighteen percent, we also expect that to increase as snow and ice removal is three percent. Under Administrative four oh one. Under Administrative four oh one, some of the new things or increased things that we'll be doing. Are in the My Law app where we're answering more more calls, especially when it comes to scheduling. Recycling, composting, waste mana- waste management and bulk pickups. We'll be streamlining compliance reporting, enhancing our in-house IT activities so that we can better handle call handling. And uploading uh more public work codes and we're also working with ECD on some of the updates to uh that we'll be working with with chapter seven and fourteen. Under Maintenance four ten. Uh they preventive maintenance of programs, the fleet divi- for FY twenty three. The fleet division will be road testing several electric and hybrid vehicles for future and future integration in the city fleet. Some of the things that will have to happen is of course the infrastructure enhancement, which we are also working on at this time. We're also going to be increasing technical training and man hours to keep place with the computerized complex equipment. And also prepare for taking in uh electrical fleets, that's always, that's already on on start from twenty twenty three. Moving on to Waste Collection four fifteen. The department currently performs better than the national average for numbers of customers per route. Tons per route and the cost per residence, including overhead, is lower than area private collectors. The one and done program will help us keep up with this with this efficient program that we believe. As we get our total year of looking at the improvements that we can do. To continue to educate the public and implement full implementation of the one and done program. For fa- for fiscal year twenty twenty three, the department will be performing a feasibility review. To determine route increases and minimum operating crews to the due to the increase in development miles. As you all know, we have several developments coming on nine, so online, so we will have to do a review in twenty twenty three. Moving on to recycling for which is four twenty. As you know, we've been enhancing the recycling services. And we've also taken on uh not only Christmas tree collection, but tire recycling, CFL and fluorescent light bulbs. Batteries, DVDs, CDs, heavy appliances which we call white uh recycling. And also uh automobile batteries and we also collect uh the uh oil and recycled uh oil and also antifreeze that we have a drop off spot for. That will be increasing as we're as we're all aware in twenty twenty three. Also for twenty twenty three, we're going to be moving towards expanding the commercial recycling, so we've highlighted one and done for residential, but we are planning a push to expand the commercial recycling. Uh in conjunction with the environmental uh programs uh management officer also. Moving on to street maintenance, four twenty five. The biggest addition that we have to street maintenance is our increase in storm drain cleaning and maintenance. And the addition to of two dams that are now our responsibility. Uh along with some drainage ponds and new developments. We are uh also in work in agreement with the county that some of the drains that we bring in with our new programs, the ARPA. We will be maintaining because we'll be implementing those uh new programs. For FY twenty three, planned activities include a continuation, I apologize, I jumped ahead. Also on the street maintenance is the sidewalk where we enroll patch. We will do our annual sidewalk and road patching survey and we will increase in the CIP, the streets that we sent to you all. Uh that we're that we provide annually for the most critical streets that we have to repair in twenty twenty three. Moving on to snow and ice removal, which is four thirty. During the period of March twenty twenty one through February twenty twenty two, we experienced six storms. That required department response. The total for snow and ice communication accumulation for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two was twelve and a half inches of snow. And a quarter inch of ice, the total salt used to combat the icy conditions was eight hundred and fifty one point five tons plus four thousand three hundred and fifty pounds of calcium chloride. This is one of the main reasons why you'll see us moving away and looking at what we call treated salt and brine applications. In future years that we will be bringing online in uh fiscal year twenty twenty three. The salt dome has an average capacity of four hundred and fifty tons, we'll be looking at a review of replacement for that salt dome in twenty twenty three. Service has been expended to new streets and subdivisions to twenty twenty three budget. Numbers are based on five twelve one five, I'm sorry. Twelve hour winter storms with a total accumulation of of about eighteen to twenty five inches during the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three season. This is what we base our manpower's impossible hourly needs on, that's about the average for our particular region. Moving on to street lighting, four thirty five. Most of the city's street fixtures are maintained by Baltimore Gas and Electric Company for which the city pays a fee. There are approximately seventeen hundred and seventeen street lights in the city. Fifteen hundred ninety four of which are maintained by BG&E. The other one hundred and twenty three are maintained by the Department of Work, Public Works. These numbers are growing as we bring in new subdivisions and BG&E brings on new lights. These numbers are growing, so this number will grow during twenty twenty three. Uh one thing I'd like to make uh the council aware of also is that we've just been notified. That the city is responsible, although we pay BG&E for maintenance. We're responsible for inspection of all seventeen hundred and seventeen lights and then when we find problems. We provide it to them. That is a huge responsibility that we're required to take on in twenty twenty three. Twenty twenty three goals and initiatives for this division. Is the use and conversion of the LED lighting is planned to continue, as as I've reported out previously. That has begun to show us dividend, saving the city money in a utility utility cost. We plan to get up to a hundred percent. We're trying to meet that hundred percent mark in twenty twenty three and we've also required all new developments. To put in LED lighting which is energy efficient and saves on utilities. Moving on to engineering and technical services, four forty. The Engineering and Technical Service Division plans, coordinates, inspects and supervises department. CIP construction projects performed by contractors. Uh and city personnel, the division is also responsible for monitoring, coordinating and inspecting construction by developers. And public utilities within the public right of way. Why is this important? Is also the city, whenever we lay fiber optics ourselves, we are now considered a utility for compliance purposes. We have to monitor that through our own, through the Department of Public Works. Moving on, projects and activities planned. For twenty twenty three include CIP planning and document prep- document preparation. Street improvement programs, traffic studies, light level monitoring, engineering for future street projects. Construction, inspection and new developments in city projects. Asset and acquisition of data for GIS systems to assist the IT department. Coordination with state agencies for joint projects. And this particularly goes to things like Route one, one ninety eight where they're doing curb implementation. Uh upgrading our ADA, so we were ADA compliant when we did our eleven intersections. And we're upgrading ADA on those now to meet current ADA requirements. And we work with states for their parts of the sidewalks and streets that connect with our parts. So those are joint programs and the same with with the county. Our in-house traffic improvements improvements. Our in-house traffic improvements improvements and our off-site infrastructure. Traffic engineering four four five. This this part of the department is responsible for traffic engineering. Installation and repair of traffic control signs and signals, pavement mark markings and lettering. Operation and maintenance of traffic counters for studies and for inspecting and correcting hazardous conditions. Currently, we have eleven intersections that we said that will probably increase in twenty twenty-three. We are aware that one intersection will come online, possibly two. Traffic safety and planning and special projects are also handled by this department. This is the department ha- uh that handles when you want a speed and traffic study. What else do is included in this department is line striping activities including crosswalks. At ninety-five intersections in county. Those intersections will increase for twenty twenty-three. Pavement marking at the railroad station commuter parking lot is also under our jurisdiction. Each year, the department studies the possible need for future traffic signals on an as needed basis. Goal twenty twenty-three goals. We as we anticipate an increased activity and monitor during this year, we also anticipate. The next phase of the citywide traffic study. That was only the initial phase. Uh as discussed previously, we anticipate another phase of that and moving forward with that. For especially newer uh sections coming online and new newer housing developments. Moving on to tree management forfeit. We're responsible for the parts of tree management that parks and wrecks are not, which we call the urban park. Trees in a white right of way, trees in the sidewalks and things of that nature. The department personnel performs routine trimming and pruning to remove dead tree limbs. Obstructions along sidewalk, streets and branches and trees that obscure street and traffic signs. For twenty twenty-three, we're going to be working with the Maryland Forestry Department. To update our tree system. The last time this was done was nineteen eighty-seven and that is still used as our historical benchmark. In the last year, we have added eighty-two trees to our part of the city's tree system. We also uh look at the municipal tree survey when citizens call and say that they need trees removed. Moving on to the C I P projects, we have several a C I P projects that are ongoing. Those are for sidewalk maintenance, for uh traffic lights, traffic signals replacements. Fleet vehicle replacements. Fleet vehicle replacements and uh for street and sidewalk maintenance and street repair. Uh those are the major uh C I P projects at this time. And that concludes my initial overview of D P W.
Thank you, uh Director B. Well, this concludes the budget presentation. Um I'd like to give the council some time to review and digest. So I'm going to ask then council members to submit any questions you have in writing to the clerk. And while a follow-up discussion scheduled for the budget work session on Monday, May ninth. Two thousand twenty-two at five P M. And again, we'll have the mayor and city council meeting a regular on Monday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. And if needed, we'll have a budget work session Wednesday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. And lastly, the mayor city council meeting. Our regular mayor and city council meeting on Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Um any comments from the council before we adjourn? All right, well, there's no further business to come before the council. This uh meeting is adjourned. Thank you.